Good evening. Thank you so much for joining us tonight at our town hall meeting. We've had two town halls in the fall and this will be our third town hall for the year. The purpose behind the town hall meetings is to give information to our parents. So we started off with the first town hall that was all about safety for school safety. Then we had the second one around the end of September, beginning of October, and that focused on safety but also budget. Tonight, our focus is going to be safety and also giving you an overview of the budget as well. We do want to respect your time, so we will conclude within the hour as we post it on the internet. At the conclusion, we want to thank our active day department, our, um, our active department because they're providing their famous sausage tacos that they make on Friday night and they'll be hot off the grill when we finish to get to everybody that's here tonight. So I want to, we're going to have two presentations. We'll have Nikki Williams and Mommas, she's our Assistant Superintendent. She will be reviewing safety protocols. It's very important for us if we send out a remind, if we send out a school messenger and tell you that the campus is unsecure or the campus is on hold, are locked down, you as a parent know exactly what that means. So that is why we're happy that we need to discuss that. We also tonight want to talk about reunification. If for some reason there were a fire at a campus and we had to evacuate, we want to describe and explain to you how that process works. What is reunification? How will it work for you to pick with your child at that alternative location? So we're going to discuss that as well. And then Mr. Alex Sessens, our CFO of the district, will be going over budget and finance tonight. So before we get started, if you're a school employee, a principal, director, please wave. So I want to thank everybody here as well for, for being here. We've given you a card. We will provide opportunities at the end for you to ask questions. We will also provide opportunities and we'll be here when it's over. If you want to come one-on-one and ask the same questions. And then you can also provide any questions that you have on that card. Put your contact information. If it's nothing about what we're talking about tonight and you don't have time at the end to come to discuss any questions you may have, put it on that card and we will get back with you tomorrow and answer any questions that you may have. So once again, welcome and I'll turn it over to Mrs. Williams. I think I forgot to introduce myself. Um, Cindy Flores, Assistant Superintendent. Sorry, I introduced wrong. Good afternoon. Um, does everybody have waters? So y'all think it's cool? Yes? In a big story, um, this school year with all the tragedy events that have happened, we practically together as a district, as a community, to align our state, our standard protocols for safety. We have a district safety chief and, you know, Mr. Ramos was part of the safety, is part of the safety chief. I am and other directors and leaders here. So we have been getting this kind of training and information, making sure that our emergency operation plan is up to date to meet requirements that PEA has, has proposed for us. And we have submitted a plan and if it gets reviewed and if they don't like what we have, then we take it, they send it back to us. So what we're going to discuss today, so what we're going to discuss today are your standard emergency protocols. So when you get, when you get a call, when you get a text message from your son or your daughter, "Hey Mom, school's on lockdown." Well, we're going to be sent, we would send you a message and it would be one of these five themes that we're going to use. These are the five protocols that we're, we would be sending the messages about, okay? So the first one is hold. And I want you to look, okay? Which one would it be? This one? These are the five standard protocols. The first one is hold. The second one is secure, lockdown, evacuate, and shelter. Let's go over each one. I think I did it wrong. Okay. When we talk about all of these, there's always going to be, the administrator at the campus is going to get a call from our superintendent because she's being given information from our local PD department that there is something going on. Or it doesn't have to be local PD, it could be something in our area. So there's always going to be one of those words with an action. So the first one is hold. If you hear or you know that we are in a hold, that means it's, what does that mean? How is it going to look in the campus? It's going to be hold in your room, in your area. Hold. The teacher's going to hold all the students in the area. What's going to happen? The hallways are going to clear. So if a student is walking in the hallway and they hear the word "hold" in, in the classroom, that means the nearest classroom they're going to have to go to, okay? The students are to remain in the classroom at all times until they get clearance from the principal, from the administrator in charge. Is the door going to be locked? You better believe it will be locked. We are always practicing, um, safety protocols and that is one of our protocols that all the doors of the classrooms are locked. If you're in the classroom and your subie or your, your students are in a classroom with a teacher, it's going to be business as usual. It's just that they're going to hold them in the classroom. No one's going to go anywhere, no one's going to go to the next class, no one's going to go to the gym, into the locker room, whatever it is. No one's going to the front office. All students will remain in their classrooms until the hold is lifted. And the team, and the teacher continues teaching like nothing else. They're going to stay in the classroom, they're going to go over their lesson, they're going to do all these activities that are planned, but they stay in the classroom with their door locked. Why a hold? A hold when the principal calls a hold on the campus is because there could be, and these are just some possibilities. It could be because there's an altercation in the hallway. There'd be kids fighting in the hallway. Or it could be a medical issue, a seizure, a student having a seizure in the hallway or in the cafeteria and we need to remove all kids back into the classroom because we need paramedics to come in and assist. Or there's an animal in the building, as you know, they, they do like to come into the first building. So if that's the case, then your principal may call and say, your principal may tell the teachers, "We are on a hold." Hold in the classroom. And these, these would be one of the reasons why we are on a hold, okay? So if you hear the word "hold," it's because of one of these reasons or it could be something else. And I'll go over some of the other four protocols with you. Any questions on the word "hold" and the action? Now, and we'll talk about that later. I'm going to go over the next protocol and then you'll know what, okay? Okay, so hold. Any questions on the hold? Then, um...
Any time, just one thing, if you're in a hold, there's not an immediate danger.
Okay. So with the hold, remember no immediate danger in your area. Next is secure. Secure means whatever you're doing, if you're outside or you're in the hallways, get inside and we're going to lock the outside doors. So that means both doors are going to be locked, gates are going to be locked. It's going to be a secure hold. Students are supposed to return to the building and the doors are locked and business as usual. Can you change classes? Can you go to the restroom? It's best if you don't, so we're not doing that, we're not along that. It's more staying in the classroom is a secure hold. That means outside perimeters are locked and the building is locked as well. Why a secure hold? Because there could be an unknown person in the building, there could be a dangerous animal, a criminal activity in the area. As we all know, we have schools nearby, uh, areas that could be, you know, we have here the expressway, uh, that there's criminals passing by or doing something and they could just easily escape. So, um, or plant police activity in the neighborhood. So there could be something going on in the neighborhood, then Chief Diaz will call Miss Flores and say, "Hey, we need to put this campus on hold, I mean, on secure." Or and it would be a decision between, um, this, uh, whether it would be a district wide secure or it would just be a campus secure, okay? But remember, a secure means that everything is going to be locked because there's something suspicious.
And here's an example that happened one time. We had a secure, they were getting chased by one of the fellow DAs and they were calling the district, they were saying, "What do you think?" They just called us secure, all of them, and they just told us, "So be secure in what they've done, in case they get off the ground, we're liable to be arrested." But that would be an example of secure. The only example now is if they're on campus and try to, they're not going to be secure for the month. That's an example of a secure. So in this term, a little bit of a hold, again, you're locked, you're in the gates because nobody's going to come in. A hold is a secure.
So if a school is on a secure hold and you all are visiting or you're, are visiting or wanting to meet with the teacher for whatever reason and you hear "secure," you all are going to have to stay inside because we cannot open the doors until the secure is lifted, okay? So secure means all perimeters are locked from the outside and inside the building as well. Any questions on secure? Do you see the difference between hold and secure? Hold is that there's really not an immediate danger. Secure means there could be, there's something going on, so we're going to lock up everything. We're going to lock our doors, our gates. Any questions on secure? Now, the next one is called lockdown. Locked, lights, and out of sight. Here, if the school principal tells, comes on the intercom and says, "Okay, we have a lockdown, locks, lights, and out of sight." These teachers are going to know and students will know that they're going to have to make sure the, the doors are locked, which they, that's already a plus. Lights, they're going to turn off the lights and they're going to get out of sight. Some of our classroom doors have little windows, right, on the front? So what we want our teachers and, and camp, and our students to do is get to the other side so that nobody sees them through the window. So if you're walking in and you, I mean, if you see the, if you're at the door and you peek in, you want to be in the other opposite side, students on the other side so that nobody can see. So that is what it is. Lockdown is locked, lights, and out of sight. Students are to move away from the site, they're to remain silent at all times and never open the door. When is there a lockdown? A lockdown is when there's a threat inside the school, okay? It could be that there's somebody here that's not supposed to be here, it could be a criminal person, it could be a weapon report, somebody came in with an, um, a weapon, right? And, or something worse, an armed intruder. Whatever it is, that means guys, that there's danger inside the building. That means lockdown. And when they hear lockdown, that means locked, lights, and out of sight. We tend to use lockdown for everything. But lockdown is, is a very serious protocol. So we've not had that and I thank God that we haven't. We've used the hold and, and, the hold, right? And secure. So, um, that, I want you all to understand the difference between those three. Any questions on lockdown? The next one is evacuation. Evacuation means that, um, we, is always going to be evacuate to the gym, evacuate to the parking lot, evacuate wherever they need to evacuate. And your administrator will come on and say evacuate and give the action. Um, they're going to evacuate, they're going to leave all their stuff behind, listen for any directives that are going to come out of the PA. And during an active violence event, another option is, if there is a violent event, they say, "Kids, evacuate, just get out, whatever you have to do." But we're always going to know, we're always going to try our best to give them the best directions that they need to keep them protected. But in evacuate means, uh, it could be, what? What could evacuate mean? A bomb threat? A what? Fire?
Yeah, something like that.
It could be where, um, we just, um, we just need to evacuate the building and the teachers know where their escape routes are and they're going to head up with their students, okay? Any questions on evacuate? And the last one is shelter. That means shelter and then it tells you what kind of shelter. It's, why we use shelter is when there's a tornado, when there's a hazmat. We're right here off the expressway and there's semi trucks always passing by, we're semi miles an hour with chemicals, right? So if there was a, an accident, who would it affect? Our campus here and our campus maybe even at, at Green and Academy, okay? So that would be a hazmat call. Say, uh, if there was an earthquake or there was a tsunami, but I think we made it too far for something. Or a hurricane, but if there was a hurricane, probably would hit you. But it's a, it's a shelter and it tells you what you have to do. Evacuate and shelter. If it's a chemical spill, say we're at Seaville, um, we are, we are at Seaville and there's a, the water treatment and there's all these chlorine, chloride fumes coming out and it's starting to get into our campuses. We evac, what do we do? We try to seal the room and our students, I mean, our, our teachers have the supplies that they need to seal the roof if needed. If not, they listen carefully for the principals to say evacuate. It just depends on the situation. But these are the five protocols that we use, um, when we call for, and if, if there's an emergency. So I want you all to really understand the difference between hold, secure, lockdown, evacuate, and shelter. A hold, I'm going to ask you all this. A hold, and I want to go back really quick, um, before I, I give the mic. A hold. Is there a danger in the school? Is there a danger in the school? No, but we just have to what? Yes. We said, we lock the rooms and we make sure that everybody's safe and accounted for. Secure. Do we lock the doors? There could be an immediate danger where? In the campus. And what, do we just lock the doors in the building? Do we lock what? Everything. We lock down our gates, everything to make sure that no one comes in and out. Lockdown. What's a lockdown? Something serious, like an intruder coming in and we've got to get, we've got to lock down, buckle down. We've got to get our locked, locked down, our lights, and out of sight. Those are the three things that, that we try to tell our students. Locked, lights, and out of sight. Evacuate, case of a fire, and shelter due to a natural disaster. We have provided you with this as a guide. English and Spanish, keep it by your refrigerator, keep it by somewhere where you're always at so just in case, you know, we send you a message and say, you know, "Lafayette High School is on a hold." Oh yeah, well, Mrs. Ramon said a hold could be because of this or that. And then in our message, we'll tell you the reason why there's a hold, okay? Any questions on the standard response protocols that we will be using as a district to notify you of, of the emergency? Did you understand this? Yes.
That applies to visitors as well, right?
Yes.
In the middle of a hold or in the middle of a lockdown or anything, if a visitor or parent is coming to pick up a kid or, or if it is coming in for whatever, vendors coming in, it applies to them too.
Yes. This is why it's important that we know about these standard protocols. Any questions on this?
Good afternoon, everyone. Uh, the part that I'm going to go over is the reunification portion. Uh, reunification, that basically means something has happened at the student's campus and we're going to transport, we're going to move those students to a different location. And then, then we have procedures for you to follow as, as parents. Why, why is it important? We want to make reunification.
Mr. Flores, can he change off the batHT? You don't like, that is something, sorry. Sorry, sir. This is a, this is not the main question.
Thank you, sir. Okay, why is the reunification important? We want to make sure that we are reuniting you with your parents, with your child, that we're reuniting with the correct person. So it's really important that at your campus, uh, every year at the beginning of the school year, you're asked to fill out the emergency pickup card. So it's really important that you write, that it's important for you to have on that list that can pick up your child. So again, we want to make sure that we have the approved people to pick up your child and this is going to align with our standard reunification model that we've adopted here at our campus. Am I too loud? All right. All right, our next slide then? All right, the evacuation plan. If there's an event or fire or something that's happening within the building, we want to make sure that we transport our students to a different location and that is why we're calling this our reunification area. So we have designated areas within the district. We're not going to announce where they are right now because we want to make sure that we keep that to ourselves and so that it's confidential. Once something has happened, you are going to message, that message will tell you that where that location is and the reason why we, we are reunifying your students. Again, the reunification plan will happen with, uh, with the help of our transportation. Our students are being transported to a different location based on where the incident is happening. Now, the next slide is going to tell you as parents what you need from us. It's really important that parents be notified, you're going to be notified through school messenger, you're going to be told the reason for the reunification and you're going to be told where to go pick up your child. I'm just going to give you, uh, it's really important that we transport the students first to the reunification area and then you as parents are going to learn where it is. We're not going to do both simultaneously. We're not going to do both together at the same time. So we as a district will transport the students. Once the students are at the reunification area, then you're going to receive a message as a parent where to go to pick up your child. It's really important that you make sure that you have your ID. Even though we, we might know you, we're going to have different people working, it's really important that as a parent, you take an ID with you. If someone else is going to go pick up your child, please make sure that they are on that, they are on the identification card or on the, uh, the emergency pickup card and that they take their ID with them. We've already discussed some other alternatives that we can do. If, for example, you do send someone that is not on the list, they have an ID, we're going to do something separate for them. But that's something that we will take care of if that were to arise. So after your ID, you also need to make sure, again, like I said, you know, please make sure that when you do register your child, that you have listed the people that are related to you, your neighbor maybe, uh, someone that can pick up your child at school for this reason. When you arrive at the reunification area, whatever location that might be, please make sure that you follow the directions that we give you. The directions will be given to you in the school messenger, but we are also going to have people at the location giving you directions as to whether you stay in your vehicle, whether you come out of your vehicle, whether you form a line, all that information will be given to you in your message. We do ask that you follow those instructions. When you do get to the reunification area, one of the great things that we have with the purpose we have adopted is we can do everything electronically. When we first started, everything was going to be done by paper, but now we can use our iPads, we can use our phones, so it'd be faster for us to reunify with your child. So right now, we're looking at you sticking to your vehicle, you're forming a line, someone is going to come up to you either with their cell phone or with an iPad. We're going to enter all that information and we're going to check to make sure that we are giving you or we're reunifying you with your child. And again, parents must be geared for student pickups and there will be a district employee there handing your child to you. Again, we've never done, one of the things that we did want to do is we want to practice, we want to do simulation where we do something like this so that we ourselves are prepared for the reunification. It's easier for us to say it, but when it's actually happened, we want to make sure that we're ready to reunify you with your child. So again, some things to, to remember is always make sure, listen to that school messenger, whatever announcement they give you, listen to where the reunification area is, please make sure you have an ID. One of the things that this is also going to do is once you are, once your, us, your child is reunified with you, anyone else that is listed on the reunifica, on the emergency pickup card is going to receive the message. They, they've already picked up Rosie Flores. It could be mom, dad, whomever is on that list, they're going to receive, receive the message that your child has already been reunified. So that's one of the great things about this software as well. Any questions in regards to reunification?
Yes. How do you, uh, just say I want to update my emergency contact number, whatever. How do I do that?
Right now, if you wanted to do that right now, I would ask, I would ask you to call the school. Now, a lot of the schools are going to ask you that you go in, uh, in person to add that additional name. Cause right now, we do not have access to add those names unless we have a regis, in this case, we are registered already. It just opened up today. Yes, man?
So the question is, how many, uh, is next year, for next school year, are there any requirement, like how many emergency contacts?
The last time I, the last time I checked man, we have enough space for about 20, maybe 15 names to be added to the emergency contact list. Any other questions in regards to reunification? We have one reunification area and then we have a backup. So we have two. We have two locations that we could possibly use for reunification area. At this time, I'll pass it over to our CFO, Mr. Alex Sessens.
Uh, good afternoon, everybody. I'm going to be going over the finance and budget part. Uh, I'll mostly be emphasizing on the legislative session that's currently going. Uh, so as many of you are aware, every two years, our Texas legislators, they meet and they go over all the introduced bills. And from here, they'll go ahead and see what passes on to the senate and to, uh, the house and then what goes ahead, goes ahead and gets approved and then gets signed by Governor Abbott. So right now, it's the 88th legislative session, uh, at this point, uh... So at this point, and this was in early January, at that point, over 1,900 bills have been introduced. Now, a lot of these bills, they're very similar and I'll go ahead and talk a little bit about that. What pertains to our school, our district is several things. In my case, finance is a huge part of it. Uh, a big one that's been currently introduced, uh, about 15 different bills. Uh, the original one is school funding based on enrollment or based on attendance or being changed for a combination of such, right? Like I said, right now, there's about 15 to 20 bills that are looking to change what is currently being... is currently being used. Um, as you all know, right now, after COVID, uh, you know, school districts statewide have had trouble with attendance and that's something that we're looking at as far as changing our financing. Um, other popular topics that were introduced in the legislative session was property tax relief. Again, this, these are all things that the people that we voted for, Governor Abbott, these are all things that they've talked about. So now, this is a time when these bills, these Senate bills or these House bills get introduced and see what gets passed. Like I mentioned, the enrollment-based funding, the basic allotment increase, which, uh, that's for us, that would be a huge one and I'll go a little bit more into detail about what the basic allotment is. Uh, there's also other stuff that has to do with curriculum, special ed funding, uh, social studies and sex education curriculum. I know that's been a huge topic recently. So the basic allotment, right now, every school district in Texas, with the exception of some, the basic allotment for everybody is $6,160 per kid. That is how much every school district gets per student. Now, of course, there is additional funding, right? There is additional weights and allotments. You have your special education allotment, you have your dyslexia, your bilingual, you have your CTE funding. But the basic allotment is your basic funding that every district is entitled to in the state of Texas. Now, the last time that it was increased was in fiscal year 2020. So that would be the 1920 school year, right before the pandemic came. Prior to that, it had been almost seven years before it had been increased. So why is this such a huge deal? The last time it was increased, uh, from $4,950 to $6,160, every time there's a change in the basic allotment, there's certain rules that go into it. One of the main rules here, if you didn't see on the second point, every time there is a change in the basic allotment, the law says that 30% of that increase has to go to teacher raises. That has been another huge topic that has been currently going with legislative in Austin, right? There's been all sorts of bills that have been submitted to give teachers raises, some from $15,000 a year, uh, to some Republicans submitting some for $5,000 per year. Any, any type of funding that is given, raises for teachers will happen through the basic allotment. That would be the best way for us as a community, for us to be able to see, well, how, how do we know that our teachers got a raise? If the basic allotment is increased, 30% of that has to go to teacher salary increases. Okay, so again, more or less, uh, and I'll get a little bit more into detail as far as an example. Another huge one, unfortunately, with the tragedy that happened in Fuente, a huge one that Governor Abbott has been pushing is school safety. They've released a lot of money, has been going out there. The main ones that have been, that have been highlighted here is the second one, that pertains to us, the $70.1 million for school districts to purchase the silent panic alert uh, for, for Lafayette. What we got was $13,333. And we use that with the company to go ahead and update our software and now we have a silent panic alert software that has been, that will be implemented in all of our campuses. And that is actually in combination with the reunification software that Mr. Flores was talking about a little while ago. Uh, another huge one that has been going out right now is the $400 million to assist school districts in replacing or upgrading our doors so that they are up to code. They have to be as far as six feet with additional security measures or up to eight feet. As some of the parents might see, in some of our campuses right now, we are installing electric gates. Uh, as Mr. Ramos mentioned earlier, right, if you have a secure or if you have a lockdown, what has to happen? We have to go and secure those doors out there. So once we have those electric gates in place, we won't have to have somebody actually physically go out there, those gates will automatically be locked. So that's additional safety that we're having for all of our students and our staff at the campuses. Uh, for that, every district got a certain allotment. For Lafayette ISD, we were allotted $207,000. Is that enough? No. And that's the thing right now that legislators are going over to see if we can get additional funding for that. But again, this is where the community, right, the taxpayers come into play and voice those concerns to your legislators, whoever in the area that you live in, whoever that you belong to, voice those concerns. Again, uh, to put that in perspective, right, our, uh, electric gates cost about $350,000. And again, we have to do main upgrades to some of our doors, reinforce them, we have to reinforce some of our windows, we have to reinforce all of our outside doors. Uh, so that's just something for us to go ahead and, and understand. Uh, like I mentioned, these are just bulletins, I'm not even going through every single one, I just wanted to go over the main ones. Uh, we're hoping that the allotment of the $207,000 is like a phase one. And then as, as it goes on and some of these bills get introduced, TA will release, release a phase two or a phase three, uh, grants on these. That's the one that I just talked about, the $400 million that I talked about is that one, the 23 to 25 school safety standard grant. We just submitted the application for that one last week. And so again, that one for what was allotted to Lafayette ISD was $207,000. The bond guarantee program, I won't go into much detail, but I wanted to put it out there as far as for bonds and what is going on right now. I know that a lot of districts, if they're looking to pass a bond right now, is a very difficult time. We're hoping that some of the regulations and guidelines on that from the IRS change so that they can allow that to continue, uh, to continue being guaranteed by the permanent school fund. So this is what I was talking about earlier, right, our basic allotment. The last time it was increased for us was in, uh, nineteen, in the 1920 fiscal year, right? Uh, so let's just say, for example, last year. Last year, our school board approved a $1,200 rate and as well some adjustments to all of our teacher salaries. To put that in perspective, if the state was to increase our allotment from $6,160 to $6,360 per student, for Lafayette ISD, that looks roughly around $800,000, $802,000. Out of that, 30% of that would have to be for teacher salary raises. That would be about, we would have to spend $240,000 in teacher salaries. Again, to put that in perspective, last year alone, again, we gave teachers a $1,200 rate, some got an additional adjustment, we spent $372,000 in teacher raises alone. Overall, as a district, the board approved about $800,000 in raises. Something for us to keep in mind, right? Uh, the goal is for us to be able to increase our enrollment, increase our attendance, uh, but this is something for us because remember, once you increase a salary, that salary is perpetual. Those salaries can no longer be reduced. Those salaries, the district has to maintain year after year after year. So I just wanted to be able to put those scenarios so that everybody can understand how it would look like for us if we got a $200 basic allotment increase. Of course, in my point of view, uh, we would need definitely a much higher basic allotment than $200. Uh, and I do see it very difficult for the state to fund us based on enrollment, uh, because of the funding, but the basic allotment would be a great way for us to be able to accomplish that. I just wanted to go over some key points, I wanted to talk, uh, this is for you to read on your own time, more or less, how the school districts in, the public school districts in Texas get funded. But I did want to go over, because again, our funding is based off student attendance, not student enrollment. So I wanted to put some key, uh, you know, some stats as far as the first three, six weeks. So on the first six weeks, and this is as of September 23rd, our enrollment was 2,911 students. Our attendance percentage for that six weeks was 94.78. On the second six weeks, we had increased our enrollment about 24 students. However, our attendance went down to 90.4. So you can see there, if our attendance the whole year was like the first six weeks, they would have actually funded us at a higher rate as opposed to if our attendance was in the second six weeks, even though we actually have more kids in the classroom. And so you see how it gets very complex when it comes to funding school districts. The third six weeks, it kind of averaged out, where in the third six weeks, we got, we lost three students there, uh, but the enrollment was 2,932. Our attendance went up, so our ADA, our average daily attendance was at 2,614. As of February 7th, our attendance was 2,955. If I'm not mistaken, as of Friday, our attend, our enrollment, not our attendance, I'm sorry, our enrollment was 2,955. As of Friday, it's 2,962 kids. And that fluctuates, whether we have withdrawals, whether we have kids that just enroll, so that does, it literally sometimes fluctuates on a daily basis. But again, because the state is funding us based on attendance, this is something that we have to keep, uh, close eye and monitor constantly. This is, uh, and now I'll talk a little bit about our local budget that was adopted back in June for the 22, 23 school year. This is exactly what was presented to the board. This is our initial revenue projections, based on, again, many factors, right, attendance, historical data, uh, current data that we have. So I just wanted that, uh, for our community to be able to see. And again, that was our budget as of January 31st. As you can see, what was adopted was $32,373,238, which is the same as we have in here. Uh, and then of course, the way we have to present it to the, to the board, by law and by function, I think for the community, the easiest way to understand is in this one right here, the top one. Okay, so out of the 32 million plus, the 32.3 that our board approved, about 24 million, 24.1 million goes to salaries. So you're talking about almost 75%. About two thirds of our entire budget has to go to salaries. And it's like that in every single district, right? That is the biggest factor that goes into it. And then the second biggest one would be our supplies and materials, which is everything that we need to operate, that would be at about $3 million. So I just wanted to put it a little bit more in perspective there. And then, you know, how at the beginning I was talking about, we get additional funding for our students if they are in special ed, if they are in CT classes, level one, level two, dyslexia, bilingual, uh, those would be at the bottom, so it gets broken down by program and technical. So that's just, again, our, our budget has to be broken down in different ways. Uh, our federal grants, the two biggest ones that we currently have, just like every single school district in Texas, is ESER. ESER 1 has already expired, so the only current ones that are out there are ESER 2. So for family, uh, for people to understand, ESER 2 is when we got that second stimulus. Everybody remembers the three stimulances that we got? The second stimulus we got for the school, the second stimulus was ESER 2. When we got that third, right, school districts got ESER 3. And so these will, ESER 2 will go ahead and end on September 30th of this year. ESER 3 will expire next year, September 30th of 2024. So combine these two together, the district was given about $16 million. What I wanted to present is the plan that the district had for the current school year, for 22, 23. And it's a little bit in detail as far as how the money is being used. The board has approved not only a $1,500 retention stipend that we gave out in November, but they also approved, uh, uh, May, a spring retention stipend, that's $550, that is given to all employees. And then I wanted to list, a list of all our grants that we have out there. So currently, the district has over 20 federal and state grants that are being used and monitored as of today. And the last one being there, of course, the one that I just talked about, the 22, 25 school safety standard formula grant, that is the one that we just submitted our application for last week, that's the $207,000 that I was talking about. Any questions as far as on the federal grants, the use of the funds, uh, legislative sessions? Yes, ma'am. So the presentation will be posted on our website, uh, tomorrow, along with the one that we had from the last, the previous conference meeting. And which open enrollment? Open enrollment, and if I'm not mistaken, that started this, it started today, yes, so that'll be going on pre-registration. Grow your kids, please. Any questions as far as the budget or again, legislative session? Thank you very much.
So as Mr. Sessenz talked, um, about this presentation, along with the audio of all of the explanation, will be on our website. So if you have neighbors or friends that were not able to be here, they can get on and be able to listen to the entire presentation. You can also go for transparency purposes, we want to make sure that you see all the slides in detail. So you can go to the ESER 2 and 3 and see from the website, very specifically, everything that we have spent, um, and used those specific funds for. So if you have any questions when you look at the slides, feel free to call us and we'll answer any questions that you may have. Are there any questions before we end tonight? We do, uh, have tacos for everyone and so we will have those by the fifth. You can just make a line and, and get your taco before you leave. But any questions? I also have, uh, four board members, if you will wait. We have Mrs. Jacob Steele, our president. We have Mrs. Paula Martinez, our board secretary, Mrs. Boya Casas, board member, and Mrs. Lisa Montalvo, board member. They're all still here. Yes, ma'am, if you want to take the mic away, because I'm my boy. I'm thinking about food. Microphone, that way they can hear you, ma'am.
Okay, good. Okay, no, I just wanted to mention that I really appreciate, uh, you know, this information, but one of the things I've noticed was what, uh, our CFO mentioned, you know, call your legislators, it's very important that they know what our leads are, because if we don't call them, I mean, it doesn't pay afterwards. So if you don't know who is representing you at the legislature, you go ahead and, uh, I guess they could, they get the information, I know that. Yeah, they can, you can call your school. One of them is Oscar Longoria, he's really, really a nice guy. And then the senator is, uh, Morgan La Marca. So if you don't realize how it's called to call his students, if they hear from a individual person, a community, I can promise you, they do. You deserve a meeting for yourself. Thank you so much.
I did want to mention Mr. Flores when I introduced who would be presenting. I love Mr. Michael Flores, our executive director for Quickman Instruction, so I apologize for that, sir. Any questions? Thank you, parents, I know you have had a long day, I appreciate you coming by. Thank you for the department, uh, Mrs. Nancy Laredo and her staff for contacting individuals today. So please, please get a taco, I've been having tacos for a long time. So thank you so much, Mrs. Ramos, Mr. Sessenz, Mr. Flores. Principals, any, any announcements, principals or directors? Registration begins today. We are having a one-month campaign. The secondary school, the elementary school, to get the most registrations within the next month, gets, uh, gets something for that campus. They're gonna be pushing that so that we can get that registration done. So please get online and register. If you have any questions, you can contact us. Uh, Ms. Letho, or, yes, ma'am? Tomorrow night is open house for Dominguez Elementary. At Thursday night, open house for JCP Green Neighborhood Schools. Next week, next, March 7th, high schools, March 6th, academy, March 6th. Attendance of Friday, uh, spring break. You're devoted, Mr. Flores. Any other questions, announcements? Please, um, stop by and again, Mr. Salazar, Mr. Reyes? Thank you. I can't hear you. Thank you all so much. Please, if you have any cards or questions, write this to me. If you want to talk to any of us and have any questions, we'll be here. And if you have any cards that you want to give back, please write them and we'll get back with you with any questions you may have.